I would like to welcome everyone to our city council meeting. Always nice to see youthful faces in the audience. No offense, Ralph, but welcome. So for the record, it is Tuesday, December 6th. It's 6 o'clock. We'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Mayor DeVere.
Here. Item number two is a pledge of allegiance. If you all rise and join us in our pledge to our flag.
(inaudible) to the private life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is our community invocation. Tonight will be led by Pastor Steve Moore. Welcome back to the community. I think you've been off gallivanting around and celebrating at least several weeks of freedom, maybe a couple of months.
Yeah, we were, my wife and I were gone for 28 days.
Very nice.
Mostly focused on the northeastern states where we had never been. And especially in the fall, the colors in Vermont, even went into Quebec. Time we got back, now we can say we've been in all 48 of the continental United States.
Well, welcome home.
And then we went to Ecuador, home for 10 days, and then went to Ecuador for 10 days.
Oh, my gosh. Well, I'd like to invite you all to join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Thank you so much for being here.
Honored to do it. Heavenly Father, it's pretty easy to recognize that you're the Creator, that our world couldn't just happen. There's dynamic balance to it, like the snow we had today, that benefits us in so many ways. But this time of year, what we really recognize is that you sent a Savior. We're grateful that Jesus has come in the flesh, that we have a God that's invasive into our lives and demonstrates how good life can be. God, in this season, we see it as citizens of Meridian, how good life is. The experience that we had Friday night in our town parade and just seeing a community come together for all the activities reminds us that we're not an island. The poet is so right. And Father, the fact that this is a council meeting, that reminds us, we don't just have one leader, we have several leaders here. And it's a community, and we depend on each other. I pray that you would give them special insights. They have an awesome responsibility. They make decisions that affect lives in so many ways. And grant them a special measure of wisdom in the decisions to be made today. We seek to glorify you and reflect the gift of Jesus in our life. In his name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Moore.
Merry Christmas, Steve.
Item number four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
On item 6X, the resolution number is 16-1181. And on 6Y, the resolution number is 16-1182. On 8A, the mayor's youth advisory council update has been vacated. On item B, 8B, the resolution number is 16-1183. On item 8D, the resolution number is 16-1184. And on 10A, the ordinance number is 16-1716. With that, I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All eyes most carried. Item five is a proclamation, and I'm going to move to the podium and would like to invite the team from Rocky Mountain to join me up front. Welcome. Well, it's certainly an honor to always recognize the great accomplishments of the young adults in our community. And we have here the track team from Rocky Mountain High School, cross-country. Well, I still consider that track. I guess that's a sensitive topic, huh? Okay. Cross-country team. It is something that we take great privilege to honor the athletes when they accomplish state titles. And I'm going to read a version that doesn't list all the names. But the version that will go officially on record will have each of the athletes' names in it. And so someday, if you ever want to go back and say, "I have a proclamation in my honor," you can actually go back to this date, find the minutes, and your name will be listed in the minute. So you can prove to your family members or whoever you would like to impress that this proclamation is really for you. And it's for the team. It's together that you were able to accomplish this, and we just are very grateful that you're here. So let me read this, and then I will see if, I'll turn this over to your coach, and maybe each of you want to introduce yourself and the grade that you're in and maybe the event that you participate in. Whereas being an athlete is more than training to excel in sports or be physically fit. It is training to build leadership, character, confidence, teamwork, and resilience, all traits that are needed to succeed on the course, in the classroom, and in the real world. And whereas the Rocky Mountain Boys Cross-Country Team plays first at four major cross-country invitational meets and at the district championship. Now whereas their hard work and teamwork resulted in running away with the 2016 state championship for cross-country, and whereas the capturing of the state title builds school spirit and allows these student athletes to walk the halls of Rocky Mountain with a little extra swagger, whereas the leadership training and discipline of their coaches help all the team members to focus their talents and passion to become a winning team with each player making valuable contributions to their victory. Therefore, I, Mayor Tammy DeVere, hereby proclaim December 6, 2016, as Rocky Mountain High School Cross-Country State Champions Day in the City of Meridian and call upon the community to join me in congratulating the Grizzlies on their remarkable athletic achievement and for representing Meridian so proudly in the state tournament. And we're here to celebrate your success, so congratulations and thank you for being here.[544.82][544.82](applause)
I don't know what to say. It is very hard to win a state title. We're in a very hard district. Mountain View, Eagle, Bora was a very tough competition this year. We strive to run as a group. We are, it's a team sport, which you might not think. Cross-country is a team sport, but it's very much a team sport. And the boys try to run as close to each other as possible. And these seven guys did just that, and that's how we won a state title, by closing the gap and running as a team, helping each other out through workouts, hard-hill repeats to mile repeats, to grinding through the heat of August and then running in the freezing cold of November, you know, late October. As the head coach, I was super proud. I couldn't ask for a better team. They showed me true sportsmanship. They're the best of the best in the state of Idaho. And they're going to have an awesome track season, too. You want to start with your name and your grade?
My name is Sheldon Jones. I'm a junior at Rocky Mountain, and it was an honor running with these guys in state and taking state with them.
I'm Joey Tolman. I'm in 10th grade this year, and I go to Compass, but I run for Rocky. And it was great running with these guys.
My name's Anthony Giorso. I'm senior, and I also run for Rocky Mountain. And it was just a pleasure being able to run for Rocky this year, being able to give Bob his first state title as head coach of Rocky Mountain. So it was just a great experience.
My name's Taylor Phillips. I'm also a senior at Rocky this year, and yeah, had a great time. These past four years have been wonderful with Bob, and winning a state title with these guys was awesome.
Evan Thiem, and I'm also a senior at Rocky Mountain. And I'm just glad that we could represent the City of Meridian at the state meet and get the title.
My name's AJ Shivek, and I'm just an 11th grader at Rocky Mountain, no different from anyone else in this room. But as a team, me and these guys, we did it. We won state, and I would like to congratulate them.
My name's Drew Hyatt, and I'm a junior at Rocky. And it's been a pleasure running with these great guys. Had a lot of fun and glad that we could pull off the state title with the seniors that we have, and let's do it again next year.
I'm Katie Januzey. I'm the assistant cross-country at Rocky Mountain, and I'm proud of these boys for who they are, not only as athletes, but as people and who they are in the community.[787.56][787.56](applause)
And it sounds like half your team are seniors, so great way to cap off your senior year, right?
(inaudible)
Very, well, we'll look forward to seeing you again. I like that competitive spirit. And you really do not have to stay here, but you're very welcome to. Okay, item number six is the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
On the consent agenda, as stated earlier, item 6X is resolution number 16-1181, and 6Y is resolution number 16-1182. And with that, I move we approve the agenda as printed and for the mayor to sign, the clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as read. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All eyes most carried. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, and item 8A has been requested to vacate. We had some car problems, and we just gave a recent update, so thought we would put this off till, to kick off the beginning of the year. So item 8B is resolution 16-1183. It is a resolution to appoint Megan Larson to seat five of the SWAC. Do I have any questions? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve resolution number 16-1183.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 8B. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All eyes most carried. Item 8C is under our fire department, and I'll turn this over to Chief Palmer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, as you're all aware, we recently purchased two new fire engines and put those in service. And we have one of the engines that was being replaced to bring before you to declare surplus. We have an offer from Middleton Fire to purchase that engine for the sum of $30,000 if you declare that surplus and allow us to proceed with working with Middleton on that.
Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Chief Palmer, was the dollar figure confirmed to be consistent with an appraisal from Pierce for the value of that surplus property?
As best we could tell, yeah. Based on mileage and wear and tear, age, number of hours, that they felt that that was consistent. Having not seen the engine, they felt that that was a fair price.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further questions, we'll move to resolution 16-1184.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I move we approve resolution 16-1184, authorizing the sale of the 2002 Pierce Enforcer fire engine to the Middleton Fire Department.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 8D. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Most carried. Under item 8E, just continued discussion. I received a very short and brief email from Chairman Yearsley, just saying he supports the increase in P&amp;Z members to seven and the two that just came in to the commission that we interviewed. He looks forward to serving with the additional two seats and didn't know what questions just, I had just said that you would like indication of his support. So with that, I would ask if there's any specific questions I can help you with. Otherwise, I will bring two names to our next meeting.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Cavanagh.
Did we hear from any of the other commissioners on this issue?
I communicate through the chair, so no, I didn't reach out to all of the commissioners.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
The reason why I ask is, just through my course of day, I happened to bump into a commissioner and asked his opinion, and he had voiced some concern about a large group and how long the meetings could potentially go. And so I'd encouraged him to reach out to you and voice that or voice that to the chair. I don't know if that has happened or if he reached out to the chair maybe before or after he had reached out to you.
Yes, I don't know. I reached out to the chair immediately following our meeting, so he would have had opportunity to and to pass that information on. No, I. Any questions? If not, I will bring the two names forward next week and seek your approval. Item 9A is final plat from November 22, 2016, on H2016-0124. I'll turn this over to staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, this will be a pretty abbreviated report. We did get concurrence from the applicant that they're in agreement with the staff report, but I do have a couple of exhibits on the screen right now, kind of showing you the location of the 67 residential building lot, 17 common area lot, final plat on 21.75 acres in the R4 zoning district. So unless there are any questions, we would ask for your approval of the subject final plat.
Any questions from counsel? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion? Yes, Mr. Byrd.
I move we approve the final plat on H2016-0124.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve this item. Any discussion from counsel? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All eyes most carried. Item 9B is also a final plat for H2016-0125. Caleb.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, kind of a similar story here. I do have a verbal consent from the applicant that they're in agreement with the staff report for white acre subdivision. This is the second phase of the plat, so Google Earth doesn't show the first phase, but it is located generally between Eustick and McMillan Road on the west side of Meridian Road. There are 31 residential lots in this phase and 11 common lots on 7.04 acres of the R8 zone. So again, unless there's any questions, we would ask for your approval of the subject final plat.
Thank you, Caleb. Any questions from counsel? Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve H2016-0125.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 9B. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All eyes most carried. Item 10A is ordinance 16-1716. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian ordinance number 16-1716, an ordinance filed H-2016-0047, Vrato subdivision, for annexation and rezone of a parcel of land located in Government Lot 3, Section 5, Township 3 North, Range 1 East, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A and annexing certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian as requested by the City of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of said lands from RUT to R8, medium-density residential, and R15, medium-high-density residential zoning districts in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of this ordinance. Is there anyone who would like to hear it read in its entirety? Seeing none?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve ordinance number 16-1716 with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 10A. Mr. Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All eyes most carried. Under item 11, counsel, I usually give you a preview of upcoming events. We'll be holding the second Growing Together meeting on Thursday, November 8th, at the New Ventures Lab from 9:30 to noon. This is regarding the Phils District, and the first meeting was well-attended with good dialogue and comments. This will be the second meeting. We also have Coffee with the Mayor next week on Tuesday, December 13th. It will be at Frankie's Java at 8:00 a.m. Always love it when you can join us and have an opportunity to hear the questions or receive comments from our citizens. And lastly, Sensi Points of Lights Holiday Concert is Tuesday, December 13th. Hopefully, we might be done with our workshop, and you can join them at 6:30 to 8:00. Their campus is decked out with lights, and as I understand it, there are more than 365 trees that are wrapped in over 26 miles of Christmas lights. So it will all be lit up. The choirs from Eagle and Rocky Mountain High Schools will perform, plus we'll have Christmas carols and other holiday favorites. So you're invited out to join in an evening of Christmas festivities. Are there any topics for future meeting agendas?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Not really a topic of a future meeting agenda, but I had a son born on Thursday, and my dad, they had their organizational meeting for the legislature, and he, we named him Lincoln Joe Palmer, and so he took a moment and mentioned him so that he would be on the record. So I figured, since I'm his dad, also in government, I'd better do likewise. But I just wanted to mention that we'd, even though Councilman Cavanagh also has a Lincoln, I had chosen that he would be my second son's name back when I was like 12, after my second favorite president and.
It's still kind of suspicious, but.
And then Joe, obviously, after my second favorite legislator. It would have been weird to name a son Lenore Barrett, so I had to go with Joe there. So just wanted to throw that on the record so that someday I can look it up and probably be the only one that'll ever look at those minutes.
Well, thank you. And as you're mentioning Lincoln Joe Palmer, date, time, weight, length, you know, give us the details.
Social Security number, so it could be on public record.
Thursday, boy. I think he was 19 and 1/2 inches, 7 pounds, 8 ounces. He was our smallest kid, even though we had twins. The twins were bigger.
Wow.
I think.
And he's beautiful.
The most round head ever. Rounder than mine.
Well, congratulations.
Thanks.
We wish you many sleepless nights and a great holiday. It's always fun. Newborns and Christmas, there's nothing better. My daughter was born on the 17th, and she was the best president under my tree that year. So congratulations.
Madam Mayor.
Caleb. It's like, where did that voice come from?
I wanted to follow up on a future meeting topic that was discussed right before Thanksgiving. I believe it was Councilwoman Ann Little Roberts that asked for an update on the Eagle Road at Village Drive. And so I just want to let you all know, I did talk with Erica Bowen yesterday. She's the ITD District 3 Traffic Engineer, and she will be at your January 10th workshop. So that is scheduled, not to get into the details now, but they are working with Center Cal and some legislators and traffic engineers and trying to work that out, but she'll give you a more detailed update and have hopefully a little more solid answer than the quick update she gave me yesterday on the 10th.
We had kind of hoped to hear something about how they were going to deal with transportation pressures during the holiday rush, so. But I will not kill the messenger, even though it is tempting.
Well, Madam Mayor, I mean, if you'd like, I can follow up with her. She wasn't, there's not much of an update right now. They're still in negotiations and talking, so I don't think that, they're playing it out through the holidays, I guess, if I could summarize what I heard essentially from her. But they are working towards allowing the signal at Village Drive, but they still have some things to work out, so.
All right. So Chief, I. So chief, I guess it's extra duty for our patrol officers and maybe even our fire department in response to what frustrated drivers will end up doing to, to beat the line that causes by removing that left-hand turn. So maybe next week, you can have a report on how things are going out in that area as far as enforcement goes and safety.
We haven't had any crashes.
Had the barricade ran over a couple times.
Well, we are seeking peace on earth this Christmas, so.
Madam Mayor, if I, if you'd like, I can follow up with Erica and see if she'd be willing to come sooner. That was just, I threw out some dates, and she said, let's, let's, by that time, I should have more of a solid update. But if you'd like me to try and advance that, I'm willing to invite her to next week or the week after, if that's what you'd like to see happen.
Counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, it was an unfortunate situation that happened, but it sounds like things might be eventually going our way. I'd shy from poking the bear further if it's trending our way and see where it goes.
Ms. Little Roberts?
Madam Mayor, it would have been nice to have had something sooner, but having spoken with Center Cal and several of the businesses out there and listening to their frustration, but also listening from Center Cal's perspective to the progress, I'm guessing we're probably not going to have any more information than what Caleb has currently provided until talks get further along. But, but thank you, and thank you, Caleb.
Very good. Well, we'll hear from ITD then after the beginning of the year. Thank you for your follow-up, Caleb, on that. Okay, item number 12 is executive session.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we go into executive session as per Idaho State Code 74-206-1D.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.